Okay, welcome everyone to the March. Kathy, we're starting to the March 13th, 2019, the Stowe Regional School Committee meeting. Calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. The first item on our agenda as usual, the citizens' comments. Are there any comments from the citizens in the audience?
Hi.
Can you tell us your name and the town that you're from?
Yes.
And which agenda item you're representing?
Yes, so my name is Kelly Lawler and I live in Stowe and I've lived there for the past five years. And the agenda item might be on a previous agenda item from last week and the weeks before on Universal Full Day Kindergarten.
Oh, I'll tell you what, our process is not to take comments unless it's something on the agenda.
Okay.
What the heck, I know you're, we all are gonna hit me.
No, but did you just send us a letter?
I did, yes, yes. So I just would like to just say a few things that were in that letter.
I'm gonna let you do it, but I'm gonna keep your time. What's that?
Decision's been made.
I can speak quickly.
Well, the decision has been made.
I can speak very quickly.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, so I'm just, you know, I'm a new mom, I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old. In every state that I've lived in, every town that I've lived in, there has been full-day kindergarten provided for me, my peers. As a teacher, I teach in a neighboring school district. Every school I've taught in, previous to living in Massachusetts, students have had free tuition, full-day kindergarten. So I was just a little shocked coming in and moving into Stowe, realizing what an amazing school district Neshoba is and wanting to move into this school district and then finding out when I had kids, you don't think about these things until you have them. Full-day kindergarten isn't free tuition, not universal. So it's just something that, I've done a lot of research and I know that Wachusett's is moving and closing the gap. They're also a regional school district and I just don't want us to be left behind.
Do you realize that we did vote to include that?
Yes, but I didn't see the last video. It wasn't posted to YouTube for the last school committee meeting and I couldn't make it. And it looks like it's like 2023 and a rollout or something. Wachusett's actually going to put into effect, once they vote on their budget in May, they're gonna put it into effect for this fall school year. And so I just think that that gap is something that we can continue to work together as a school committee to bridge that gap and to make full-day kindergarten universal for our kids, available for our children.
Okay.
So that's my concern.
So, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And I did read your email, I think we all probably read it, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We do, we did vote to include funding for the gap year on school, Universal K, in this upcoming budget. So it won't be fully funded because financially we can't, but we are making a sizable commitment to funding that gap year. So, if you did, and the other thing is, if you, if you, we don't control the videotaping and the posting to, I think it's YouTube now, that could be.
That's where I was looking.
Then I suggest if you contact the Bolton Access TV because they do most of that for us.
They didn't have an answer, I did contact them.
All right, so thank you. Are there any other citizens' comments?
No.
Okay, moving on, thank you. School, oh, so our school representative is at Tech Week. I don't have any updates, I think I'm exhausted all my updates. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Clenchey.
Great, thank you. So we have, we have just a couple of quick things, as we are pulling this together, it struck us just how much, how many meetings we have been at and you can't really categorize them. So we've got a couple of things that we're gonna go over and Todd is going to speak, Assistant Superintendent McGuire is gonna speak through our PD day in a minute. I want to thank all the folks with the community reading and all of the special guests who went to Mary Rowlinson. We've had these at all of our elementary schools and Mary Rowlinson was one that I did attend. I read "One Plastic Bag," which was a great story of the teacher, thank goodness, sent me, it sent me a glossary the night before because it has so many hard words in it. I had to practice the words, they were African, I had to practice them so that the day that I went there, I could do it okay. It was so much fun, great for, I just had such a great time with her class, so special thanks to Mary Rowlinson. Town administrators' meetings, those have just been, just to let you know, those continue to go on. We met again on Monday as we closed in on the budget and I just wanna thank our town administrators. We have amazing people in these positions and I appreciate the diversity that they bring, but I appreciate the seasoning and collectively working as a collaborative team. So I'm very, very grateful to our town administrators, so thank them at every level. Our professional development day, we, has come and gone and thank you so much, I'm gonna have Assistant Superintendent McGuire speak here in half a minute, but thank you to our school committee members that managed our tech, 'cause a whole group of you were there. Thank you so much for joining us that day. I couldn't have been prouder of our school district that day. If you went to the showcase at all the two gyms and saw everything that was outlined, it was just amazing. So I'll speak again in a minute, but if you can just give a brief overview.
Sure, yeah, again, I echo the thank you to those who came on Friday and I also really kinda wanna point out that, you know, it was such a collective effort from our facilities department to our food services department to all of our schools, whether it was parking, whether it was serving lunch to almost 500 people. We had over 50 people from area districts and other school systems join us for the day. Listening to George Karros, who's the founder of the Innovator's Mindset, he spoke about the importance of innovation and empowering learners through the real-world, authentic experiences. That was then really well dovetailed, I think, with the Commissioner of Education showing up and coming to speak to a lot of students in our showcases and then he spoke to the entire district. And he really spoke about the importance of personalizing education and all of those experiences for our students. So all the year too, I have spoke about that we do often look for feedback from these sessions. We had workshops in the afternoon that were given by various educators in the district, by various educators in other districts, as well as George Karros gives some professional development. But we do always ask for feedback from participants and just to give you a sense of the responses that we, that we got back, you know, over 95% of people rated the overall effectiveness of the day as either good or excellent and that's overall. We then also asked for, the next slide asked, as a result of this day, what takeaways will you implement in your own instruction or your practice with students? And what we did was we created kind of a Wordle, some of the responses that we had, so the bigger words are those that need a lot of responses around students and technology, things that are happening in the classroom and empowering learners. And so we wanted to put that together as a visual. And then the next slide asked to provide some constructive feedback for this professional development day. And again, we put it together in a Wordle and just a lot of real positive feedback from not only people in our district, but people outside of our district and, you know, doing a dipstick on how the day went for them. So it was a great day and again, it's a testament to the vision of our superintendent and everybody coming together. It was really a collective effort, so thank you.
Teaching and learning, you know, we wanna talk about teaching and learning, the role that they played here. Sydney Larsen just did an amazing job. She and Argentina worked very closely, but, you know, and Anne was there, thank you Anne for being there, appreciate that too, it was nice to have that, that kind of exposure. Senator Tran joined us as well that morning, that was unexpected, that was lovely to happen there. He showed up and was like, wow! You know, I thought that was really cool. Thank you so much for joining us. So it was, it was just a great day, you know, it was interesting, we were going between the two gyms to do these, because we had so many showcase activities. And by the way, those were so much fun, you know, whether you're playing with the robots for math or you're playing with the things.
Musical for us.
The musical things, oh my gosh, I clearly am not musical. Yes, I've got my first degree in music, but clearly, before even those things, I wasn't. But the commissioner's staff, who of course was with them, and his chief of staff, who is relatively new to the department, turned to me and said, but do you really do these things in your classrooms? It's like this, these are our classrooms that are showcasing this, but I think it was one of those wow moments when you just thought, wow, like, I mean, yes, look at what we're doing in our classrooms, this is amazing. We're so far removed from just this kind of tool, you know, and you take a look at some. Anyway, it was, it was thrilling and I think, you know, when we talked about the food services, I mean, it's one thing when our food services have to deal with like four lunches at the high school, it's another thing, because those are all staggered, right? So you have time to kind of, but when you've got 500 people walking, and I was at the tail and we were standing at the tail end of that and I looked at this mass of people and I thought, oh my gosh, they will never get through this lunch hour inside of the 45 minutes we've slotted. And I stood back and all of a sudden I just saw the line go, they were so well organized. They have all these different stations, if you didn't stay for lunch, they had all these different stations. So my personal favorite, I'd like to point out, was the pasta. For all of those of you who are very healthy, you want straight to the soup and salad bars and everything else, the pasta.
That opens up a line for you.
It opened up a lot of people at the pasta bar.
It was good.
So it was food, and the other story I tell too about the windows, so they took extra care to clean that, that school overnight between Thursday and Friday morning. And the one thing I thought when I walked out, because we'd done the dry run, of course, another dry run, thank you to you too, Todd, you did amazing work on this. The last dry run Thursday night, I thought, oh, we still need a little spiff of polish here there. The janitors just moved in and did an amazing job. The Friday morning I walked in and, oh my gosh, somebody didn't clean the windows, I saw fingerprints all over the windows. So I thought, you know, Brooke, you can't complain, the school looks amazing, like just don't say anything to anyone. Of course, I could not help myself. First custodian I saw and he said, Brooke, doesn't the building look great? I said, it looks amazing! But I see, I see all those fingerprints over the, he said, oh yeah. Within five minutes, there wasn't a fingerprint to be found, you know? Our teams are amazing, whether it's teaching and learning, the custodian team, who are standing out there in freezing temperatures directing traffic because, and that was so well organized.
It was well organized.
The traffic, because we were so worried about the number of parking spots, but it was perfect. So thanks to everyone in our town, thank you for coming. So that's that. Budget process, of course, has taken up most of our time and most of our lives, so we're looking forward to this evening and hopefully that we can bring some closure to our budget process. We've now met, Pat and I have gone around and met in every single one of our communities and last night also met with the board of the Board of Selectmen in Stowe. Their charter is a little bit different than the others and so every department has to present athletic board selection as we did that as well. They worked great as usual. Hats off to all of those folks, you know, it's such a, sometimes a thankless job, I think, when you're working with FinCom, you know, serving on those roles and they were just amazing for all of us. We had such positive interaction in each one of those three communities, including the board of selection last night in Stowe, so I'm so grateful. The only other thing that I would put up there is about the athletic update with the girls varsity basketball team for winning the Central Massachusetts Division of Jaffety ship Saturday morning. What a nail-biter, oh my gosh, it was, gosh, it was one point, one point, one point, one point. It was like, oh my, how much longer can this go on? Well, right to the very last, to the buzzer and we happened to be ahead by one point. But the, almost the entire game was one point, one point and it was just an amazing game. I was so impressed with our team and our coaching staff, but just such passion for the game and perseverance and drive and motivation and sportsmanship and it was all on display Saturday morning at Worcester State. So proud, so proud of our girls. So that's it for us.
That's great. Any questions for Superintendent Clenchey or Assistant Superintendent McGuire? Nope? Okay. All right, new business, Neshoba Robotics Competition Travel Approval Request.
So I think we're gonna take that and I'm gonna have Assistant Superintendent McGuire start because both of our folks are in meetings tonight, both Principal Dina Minako is at another meeting and so is Mr. Portianni. This is a regular yearly excursion that Mr. Portianni takes every year with his group and we had even alluded to this at our last meeting when we were talking about the group going to New Jersey. So this is the exact same group and this particular competition is in Maine, he goes every year. So this is just an annual thing for them. So this is us just coming forward, it'll be overnight and everything is in place for it.
And everybody's curated, fingerprinted and all the information is in the document.
The buses are aligned.
Great.
Thanks, Delita.
Just to be clear, this is total cost to students, so it's 200 per student?
I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
I talked to them about that.
Yeah.
It's just the hotel room, that's all they have to pay for.
Delita, in one hotel room?
No, the total cost, two, per student.
Per student.
Singular, yeah.
It is per student.
Per student.
Any other questions?
Nope. All right, Kathy, I move.
Okay, excuse me, I move to approve the Neshoba Elementary School Robotics Team Travel Request to the list in Maine on April 4th through 6th, 2019, for 25 students and five chaperones to attend the Pine Tree Robotics Competition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Elaine, second, and any questions?
I'm always tired.
Any comments? You get the next one. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Alita, thank you very much, by the way. All righty, and now on to own business. Okay, so before we jump into the FY20 budget discussion, as you all know, per our regional agreement, we have to approve a budget by March 15th. So that's why our schedule, our schedule, our.
My schedule.
Our agenda tonight is light, to allow as much conversation as we need to have so we can get where we need to go.
And I'll turn it over to you. Great, thank you. And so we said, I'm not gonna rehash absolutely everything, I'm not sure what Alita's gonna put up there right now, but basically we came to last meeting and you gave us some food for thought and asked us to do a couple of different things. We went back and we did all of that. I'm gonna turn it over to Pat here in a minute, just to let you know that everything that you had requested, we've put in there and so we are at our final number this evening. So I'm just waiting for it to go up there. That would be, that would be it right there. So Bolton has landed finally at 4.87, Lancaster is 3.18% and Stowe is minus 1, minus 0.13%. And that's where, and we, when I spoke to all of our FinComs, I did not share with them the final numbers because you hadn't seen the final numbers yet. So it was important and they, they were very good about understanding that. We told them that we would do the final tonight and unless we had any other changes that you had asked us to make, we knew that it would be just a little bit less than we had said last meeting, but they didn't know any finals. So this is, this is where we've landed in the final increase is 2.99% and so we would ask that you vote on that number this evening. Pat, is there anything else that you'd like to add to that?
Probably talk to the E and D component.
We added a little bit more in from E and D and not necessarily what we wanted to.
It's on the next screen.
Wasn't exactly what we would wanted to do, but there we are, thank you. You'll see at the bottom, there we have.
When you say additional, you say additional?
Yep.
O plus, what was in there before?
700, 700,000 is what that meant.
Now it's 750.
Right, and we're comfortable, we are comfortable with that number because that's, if you recall, what we did last year was 800 and we keep trying to get that number down every year and you'll recall that we've done that since the friends have got it, because you'll recall that it used to be over a million. And so every year we try to bring it down. I just would have liked to, our first go-around this year was 600, I think that that's what we had started with and then we had to build it up a little bit more to make it all work. So that's where we've landed tonight, we're comfortable with that number.
Anybody else? Elaine?
I'm having trouble with 50,000 for E and D, because the 50,000 is for kindergarten, right? With the additional money for the kindergarten?
No, that's not really how it works because it, I wouldn't equate it, like, we certainly didn't equate it like that at all.
Well, so, okay, so there was a vote that was taken, in addition to the 200,000, another 100,000. And, and then this 50,000 isn't necessarily to offset the kindergarten.
Right, because remember I took, we also took out the Dean of Students position, we did, we did everything we said that we were gonna do at that last meeting, it's exactly what we did.
Yep, but if we weren't taking an additional $100,000 for kindergarten, you wouldn't need the $50,000 from E and D.
I'd be thrilled with her taking another 50,000 from E and D.
But that's not what it's for.
But it's not earmarked for kindergarten, do you know what I'm saying?
No, I get it, I get it, but E and D is efficiencies, you know, it raises efficiencies and we don't have to have kindergarten, it's not mandatory.
But I, okay, so, so if we decided not to fund kindergarten at all, we would still have a budget that I think is benefiting from taking some money from E and D and applying it to the budget. Living, I mean, you know, it's rare that I vote along town lines, it is really rare. You've seen me do it, you've seen me support Lancaster, you've seen me support Stowe and not have an advantage to Bolton. This year, I mean, every year it's like, oh, it's a tough budget year, but this year, like I was like, oh my gosh, this is gonna be a tough one. And the fact that we've been able, and kudos to you too, Pat and Superintendent Clenchey for, for being able to reduce the amount of money that we're taking out of E and D to replenish, kudos to you for that, but I think, given that this was an unusual year except for Stowe, I don't know how that happened, except for Stowe, I think that it's appropriate to slow that replenishment down. We're not not replenishing. I mean, we're, we're still 50,000, right? From last year, so.
And there is still additional money in E and D.
That's correct.
Like we certified 1.2.
1.4.
1.4 million.
Yeah, so it's. But we were trying to get off that wheel.
We're trying, yes, you're absolutely right.
We are, but that, but think about what that, what does that mean? To get off that wheel means you're taking an extra 1 to 200,000 dollars out of your budget to replenish E and D. It's that much less you're taking from E and D, it's that much less revenue, so it's that much more expense you have to cover.
That's exactly right.
Right?
No, I totally get it.
Jump in if I have to.
I just wanted to ask a question, if that's okay?
Oh.
No, you finish, go ahead. Okay. So just to be clear, did we not, were we planning to create a stabilization line item? Okay, and were, were we going to take the monies that were left in the revolving funds for preschool and extended day and apply those to that line item or did we?
No, we did 200,000 of the 300,000 that went into this, will go into the stabilization fund for K.
But, no, no, my question has to do with those, those other funds, you know, the, they, not revolving, you know what I'm saying? You know the funds I'm talking about, that?
The stabilization funds?
No, 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 no. When you have extra money in, we have revolving funds.
300,000 dollars.
What are the funds where, if you have, like for student athletics at the middle school? If there's money left over, they go into a fund and what's it called?
A revolving fund.
All right, so, two meetings ago, did we not talk, or maybe last meeting, did we not, was it not mentioned that there was money in, in the revolving account for preschool?
Yes.
And extended day or no?
Yes.
Okay.
And that those were going to be used to cede the gap year for the preschool.
200,000.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Let me, let me finish. So that means that that was 200,000 dollars that we didn't have to add to the budget, it was like that money went in and the other 100,000 went for OPED.
Right.
Okay, so what's, I don't, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why there's an issue with the 50,000, no, I just don't understand.
You have to ask Glenn.
Yeah, I don't understand, and I get it, I get it about the.
No, because what, the vote after that was, to reduce, because in the last meeting, Brooke King said we're reducing 100,000 dollars. By the end of the meeting, we had voted for another 100,000 dollars to go into K. So now K is gonna have 300,000 dollars in stabilization. So in order to do that, we had to borrow from E and D.
Right.
No, we did not, no.
It's coming from the revolving fund.
The extra 50?
No.
Why would the budget go on?
Guys, I think the, I think, okay, so everybody stop for a second. You're looking at this linearly, you're looking at it move this from here to here versus, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, think about this akin to the way we give the superintendent money and she decides how much each of the people that works for her gets. We don't decide it. We give her, her money and we say, unless it's by law, you've gotta use it for X or Y, you decide where you're gonna allocate it. That's what this 50,000 is. We could say, yes, it's going to offset the cost for K, or we could say, no, it's going to offset the cost for the new instructional aid that you might need.
Pick up, pick anything.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be anything.
But if we had not voted to put an additional, to increase the budget by 100,000 dollars or whatever, to put to kindergarten, we wouldn't need this.
Not necessarily.
I totally disagree with you because I think, when, the way I look at it is that 100,000 was really the Dean of Students. And so I guess it just depends on how we look at things, right? So I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But your, your thinking is spot on, how you're thinking about this.
Oh, they're gonna think we're in cahoots. You're worrying a lot. Okay, I hear what you're saying.
I know.
Again, I think you're thinking about this very linear, which is great, I want you to come to work with me, but I see it more as you've got, you've got your money, you decide, you have to make this budget work. All right, you had a question?
Maybe you'll answer it in the same way, but is there a way of identifying how that money is used from E and D, once we pull from E and D, like, is there a specific way of tracking, this amount is used for this, this is used for that?
Not really, I mean, that's not generally, it's more along the lines that she says, I mean, it's a single line and then we boost that line or take away from that line or what have you. And it's seen as a revenue that comes in to support the budget. So it's not, it doesn't go specific to this line or that line.
Are you saying after the fact, if the, if we get to the end of the year and there's a request to move money out of E and D, that you would wanna know where it's going? Because I think we're over-engineering this issue a little bit and it could be me, so I need to know what the rest of you think.
So if I, just checking my own understanding.
Yeah.
So Brooke was asked to do a further reduction of 100,000 dollars. So she did a reduction of 50 and then we're taking 50 from E and D, is that what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I get it. In the school.
How do you feel about that?
What kind of position would that put us in? What, what kind of position does that put us in this week that we were not in last week, having pulled 50,000?
You're replenishing by less than 50,000. So if, let's assume all things being equal, instead of 1.4 next year at this time, you'd be 1.35, right? Well, not even. Well, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be 50,000 dollars less that you're replenishing.
And so pulling, so pulling anymore from E and D would basically put us at a wash, right? We would not be replenishing, right?
No.
That's one way to look at it. I don't know that I would agree with that, but I understand what you're saying. We, and again, I would also agree that I don't wanna over-engineer this. At this point in time, I think it's just a case of.
Do you wanna pull it out or not?
Yeah, I mean.
Do you wanna pull it out or not?
If we don't, I'm gonna have to go back and find, make another 50,000 dollars in cuts. That's the bottom line here. I feel comfortable in doing it. If I didn't, if I didn't have the projection for this year, seeing where I think we're gonna land for this year, maybe I think it'll go a little differently, but I'm very comfortable in doing it right now.
How do you folks feel? I'm sorry, just, I didn't mean to. How do you folks feel, I'm hearing?
I mean, it's, it's like, it's like over 55 million dollar budget, I think the 50,000 at this point, you know, is, it's terrible, I mean, it's 50,000 dollars, but I'm, I'm.
Were you asking about the entire 750,000 from E and D?
So we're trying to taper our pull from E and D, right? So taking 50,000 from E and D this iteration as compared to last week when we were not were not at a place where we were pulling E and D.
No, we were.
Pulling, sorry, pulling as much from E and D. Where does that pull, where does that put us in terms of our tapering position? In other words.
It just means instead, I mean, to respond to your, your question, when we first brought the first iteration of the budget, we, we only had 600,000 in there from E and D. And then as we got closer and closer, we knew that we had to put more from E and D. So our hope is that it would only be 600, but that's not where it landed. I'm okay with us being under 800 because it's less than we took this year. So I'm okay with that right now, but I'd like to be more sure. But again, I'm also looking at what our communities can handle, and I'm very comfortable with where we've landed, and I know our town managers are also comfortable with where numbers are.
You mentioned 750, what, what is 750?
The 750,000 from the E and D budget.
Oh, 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 all right. Lynn, I'm sorry, Susan?
Can I just have one more thing?
Yes, please.
And the fact that the kindergarten thing is, it's not something that's going to be embedded in the, in the budget long term, do you know what I mean? So it's, it's not like it's a, it's something like a salary where it's, you know, it'll grow over time. So in a year like this, even if it's only 50,000 less than it was last year.
I completely agree with you. Yeah, I completely agree with you.
Uh, no, I mean, that was, I thought that was a good point, but you have a track record of being smart and thoughtful with the budget and the budget process. So if you say that you're comfortable with it, then I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We've thought long and hard about this.
Stephen.
I have nothing to say right now.
You don't? Okay. Elise.
I think just sort of jumping out of what Susan said, it's also, you know, this is, the kindergarten thing is a, you know, a, a thing with a finite timeline in terms of funding it, and that once we get past that gap year, we are looking at the state reimbursing us for kindergarten more than we've been taking in. And so, not a lot more.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's dangerous. I hear what you're saying, but that's dangerous because it makes it sound like it's all going to be reimbursed. It's not. What we're okay right now.
I'm not saying it's going to be reimbursed.
Percentage rises what we will pay.
That we've been covering more of the cost than we would be getting if we had been offering full-day kindergarten, because we haven't charged enough tuition to cover that cost. And that's not a huge amount of money, but the funding of kindergarten will have a time, you know, have an end point. And at that point, you know, I feel comfortable, like Brooke said, that it's less than we took out of E and D last year or this year.
Yeah.
Um, both years, that's been continuing to go down, maybe not as fast as we would like it to, but I feel okay with it. And I feel like, you know, once we, I mean, there's always something, but once we get past this point, we're in a slightly better position than we are now with regard to kindergarten.
Okay, now I have some. As I recall, and I could be wrong, the 200,000 dollars we're setting aside for a future with free kindergarten is coming from the revolving funds.
That's correct.
It therefore does not impact the budget, and it's going into a stabilization fund, hopefully, so that it, that's outside the issue of budget and the issue of any, any excess E and D that's being used now to balance the budget. So they're, they're two separate issues, and we have to remember that. And we, we basically made a commitment, which is not written in stone, although we can write in on one of those stones over there, it's not written in stone, that we will continue to put 100,000 dollars a year into that fund at this point in time. That's up to each individual school community as we move ahead.
That's correct.
Could I just add one more thing? Having said that, once we've got a certain amount of money in that stabilization fund, if we're not adding to it, it's just there.
That's right.
We're not using it for anything else, it just sits there.
That's right.
Waiting to be, waiting to be utilized for express to that purpose, right?
But that's why we're setting up.
Which I'm saying incentivizes.
That's who's setting up a stabilization fund. Because that locks that money in for that purpose.
That's exactly correct.
Okay. What else in the budget? So you said that you removed the Dina students at the high school.
We did. And we also, we went back and had another second of that Spanish position too. And we ran our numbers, we ran some projections, and we ultimately decided that we probably should put that back in, one piece of that back in. So that's another piece that's in there. So, but I feel, I feel tonight, like, I come to tonight, I feel good about where we've landed. And I, I don't feel that, when I look at other budget years, that some of the cuts that we have made, had to make, that didn't happen this year. So it, I, in spite of all things, and in spite of Bolton being in the position that it's in, and I feel good that each of the communities should feel good about the numbers where we've arrived at. So I'm very comfortable tonight.
Is the staffing request increase on there, the Spanish or teacher, or is that something else?
No, there's a little bit of, a little bit of a bump up there, but not much.
So it's just taking like a partial position and.
That's right.
All right. So it's not a full one F T E.
No, it's not.
Okay. Is there anything in this budget, I'm going to open a can of worms, of worms, is there anything that's not in this budget that is going to create angst for the district?
No, I don't think so, but I think that the only concern I have goes back to our fleet, which we've brought up around this table a million times. But we've already had, I don't think that we need to hash that through because I think we landed where we kind of landed last year, so I'm comfortable to wait till the end of the year. So I'm very comfortable with that.
And see where things land. I think that's, that makes sense too. Okay, any other questions or comments? Big year. Big, big, big year.
Oh, I have one, just one question.
I'll wait to answer.
Do we have to, do we have any money in the budget to add anything to the field carpet stabilization?
I thought we did.
Yeah.
We do, okay, I just.
What'd you put in? Do you know?
I think it's 50,000.
Oh, good.
50,000, okay.
Awesome.
It's interesting because that came up at a couple of our FinCom meetings as well. And to be honest with you, our FinCom meetings were so good, and one of the things that they said is they appreciate the fact that our E and D is where it's at right now. They feel that's a healthy place for it to be at. They liked our presentations this year, we got a lot of positive feedback about that. I felt very good about our, our presentations and the interactions with our FinComs this year, they were really, really good.
So the one piece we need you to speak to is the leach field and.
Choice.
Oil tank at the high school.
Yeah, so basically where that's landed, again, in a pack and speak probably more eloquently than I can with this, because we've been in touch now with our bond counsel and our financial advisor about what this should look like. And for example, just to show you some of the back and forth, like the, we met with the town managers on Monday, and they said, should this in fact be two separate articles? And our bond counsel said, no, it should be one article. So that's what we're asking you to vote on tonight, is one article. I've also said to the FinComs, as many of you know around the table, we still continue to search for other sources of money. So that search doesn't stop just because we're doing this. And if we find some money or somebody gives us some money, then we will not have to borrow the amount of money that's there. So we're very cognizant to that. We've also said, like, we, we've been looking at trying to take this over a 10-year period as kind of what our hope would be. But if we're, if we manage to have some other things happen that we can pay it off a little sooner, then that's our hope. So that's where that's landed.
Kat?
In terms of, of this, and I know that we have an S O I going forward, on where we've been successful in having money from the state, is there any way to pull this in or get reimbursed for it, or would it, would it continue to be like standalone outside of that?
This has to be standalone, and that's a great question. I, in fact, I asked MSBA that very question. And I think Lynn had brought that up at another point in time too, and so I did go back and have that conversation very specifically with MSBA, and the answer is no, this is standalone.
Any more questions on that? We have language that's very specific, thank you for getting that. Pat and Alina, thank you so much for drafting it for us. So unless there are more questions on those two items for the article for the town meeting, so I'm going to ask Kathy to read the motion.
We want to do this before this, or this? Do you want to do this first?
No, you want to do this, and then we'll adopt the budget.
Okay. I move that the Nesho Regional School District hereby appropriate 600,000 dollars to pay the costs of designing and carrying out leaching field and fuel storage tank improvements at the high school, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow set amount under and pursuant to mass general law, section 71, section, no, chapter 71, section 16D, and the district agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, and whoever wrote this is wonderful either. M G L in accordance with mass general law, chapter 71, section 16D, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. The amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any grants the district may receive from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or any other source to pay any portion of the costs of the projects approved by this vote. Further moves, that within seven days from the date on which the vote is adopted, the secretary be and hereby is instructed to notify the boards of selectmen of each of the member towns of the district as to the amount and general purposes of the debt herein authorized as required by the district agreement and by mass general law, chapter 71, section 16D.
Take a breath. Well, that was the motion. Do we have a second?
What should he say?
Is that a second? Steve seconded the motion. Okay, before we vote, question, yes?
So this is talking about reducing the grants, are there grants that you're going after actively right now?
We are searching for any other, I, I won't be specific on this, but we're searching for any other means that we can possibly have to accept this.
So if they do secure a grant.
If they do, so it isn't like you're pursuing some, they might fall through, you're looking. I mean, you're just actively looking right now.
It's like there's some that are actually in the process, maybe fall through. If this is. I would say we're actively looking. I feel more comfortable with saying we're actively looking.
Okay.
Mike?
So building off of Lynn's question, let's just assume worst case scenario, a grant doesn't emerge to help pay for this. Fast forward one year, and we're looking at, or one or two years, we're looking at the budget, where in the budget would we find the allocation to start paying that off if we're not using?
Well, no different than any other, yeah. There's a, there's a place where we have grant also, I think, the very type of offsets that we're talking about, that's where, that would be up in that area. So you, you would see it.
Even if a specific grant, it doesn't emerge?
But there isn't any grant, so right now it's 600,000. It's not going to go up, it could only go down.
So it's in not to exceed mode?
Right, that's exactly right.
Lynn?
I don't think that's his question.
No.
I think you, I think what you're asking is when we, when you see on a budget, right?
What I, yeah, what I'm asking is, what I'm looking at a, a future budget book, where would I find the, oh, that money is going to help pay back the, the.
Right, and actually, in the budget book, there is a page right there that you would see it, where you'd see any other debts that the school district has. It would be right there with anything else.
Like the Florence Sawyer School debt was just paid off this year, I think, or last year, I can't remember when. That you're not going to see that one anymore, but if we hadn't paid it off, you'd still see the balance for the Sawyer School.
Right.
Okay.
So it's articulated in the budget books that go out to our communities.
Elaine, you have a question?
I'm a little scared to ask this, what if the town voted down?
Then we come back to square one. I, I, I would be surprised if they, they do, I mean, I certainly haven't gotten that sense in talking to the number of people that I've been communicating with, so I would be surprised if it does. However, you never know, right? And so if that happens, then we will, we will be having a whole different discussion.
Lynn?
I, I just wondered about the wording, only because.
We don't have.
We didn't have anything, this is, this is all through from our lawyer, yeah.
But we're not doing improvements, these are new.
But I think this is, who gave us this?
This is Rick Manley, he's our bond counsel from.
Yeah, we're all touching that language. He's the bond counsel, and what we're trying to do is secure bonds, pay the debt. That's the debt instrument we're using is a bond.
Okay, and so it would not go to say not to exceed at all? This is 600,000 dollars or whatever?
Whatever this says is what we say.
The mitigating language follows, even though it's hard to understand. Brooke did a nice job upfront saying that whatever we take in, if there's anything through grants or the state, it'll take it down.
Yeah, no, no, I totally get that, but.
But Lynn, you're.
This is for the borrowing, though. So if this, one second, if this, if this project, you have estimates, right?
Yes.
If this, for some reason, something happened to the economy and that estimate, if it weren't locked in, if it went up, the bond will only cover 600,000. The district would have to make up the difference. And that's not something we can really plan for. Does that make sense?
No, no, it's, the fact that it's going to the bond, yes, we're fine.
Okay.
That's his.
Any other questions on this? Do, um, Alina, I don't have to do roll call, do I? All right, all those in favor? It's passed unanimously. Thank you. Thanks for the questions, thank you for the input. All right.
So now, can I take a peek at this?
You can.
Thanks. So now that we're done with that, do, how do you feel about the budget for FY '20? Are you guys in a good place with it? Have any other burning issues? Stowe does love it.
That'll never happen again.
But you don't know that!
No, we've always, I mean, I don't know about last year, but I know we've always been traditionally higher, or higher than anyone else.
And you know, it's interesting, all of your town administrators say the same thing. Every year it's somebody else's turn. This year it happens to be Bolton's, last year it was Lancaster. So Bill's saying, you know, I figure it next year. Okay, Stowe.
So if there are no more questions or concerns or comments or grandstanding, not that you have yet, but why don't you make a motion to adopt the budget?
Okay, I move to approve FY '20 proposed budget as presented in the amount of 55,733,801 and zero cents.
In a second.
Second.
Thanks, Elise. Okay, last chance.
I just have a quick question. I know that this doesn't exist, I, I, at least I don't think it exists, but for every iteration that you go through, that fundamentally changes the budget, it tweaks and it changes. Is there a way to see what any individual iteration looks like, like as a proposed? So in other words, if we went back to February 27th, as of February 27th, this is what this would look like, so that we could go through and say, okay, I'm going to compare this to last year, that's what these numbers look like? Or is this just all done after it's been voted for and adopted by the school committee?
And you mean, do you want to see the detailed line items?
I'm not saying I want to see them, I'm saying, is there something like that?
You have that.
Yeah, we have to keep track of that, otherwise we.
Yeah, we, actually, we, and we've gotten better with this with time, I've got to say. I mean, this year, I mean, when we sat down to do the budget this year, because we're so structured, and thanks to our chairman for making sure that we're always structured in everything we do, whether it's around this table or in our offices, you know, it's true.
She says nice things now that you're leaving.
It's okay.
But you lead by example, and, you know, we all knew that after the frenzy got up, we needed to, to introduce structures in place. And so even our budgeting process this year, I mean, we knew, what do we call it, the hot list or whatever it is, we keep, we keep running tallies, we track everything, and so to be honest with you, from the first iteration to the last, absolutely everything is tracked in our offices.
So moving forward, and I'm just thinking about like this being my first year going through this, but next year, if we had gone through several different versions, I could check in and say, can I see what these numbers look like, even though they'll probably change between now and next? Okay.
Yeah, you can all, that's always available to you. You could always, as a school committee member, come in. But for us to go to that, through that kind of detail, every single school committee, for the amount of change that we make.
Right.
It, logistically, it's impossible, right? And so that's why we, you know, working with our FinCom over the last couple of years, which is now Budget and Warrant, that's why we've gotten to where we've gotten with saying this is, these are the big things, and this is, rather than going every, through every single thing. Well, so for example, facilities was such a great example this year, not that I feel good about that, but Rob had, you know, the notion of having one person do something and for, for grounds, which we since cut, of course, right? But with that came certain machinery, certain things, certain contracts, so when we took out that one person, all of the other stuff also fell off, you know? But we know that because we know all the lines so well, but to show that for every single thing, for, for, you know, almost $3 million, it's, it's just enormous. You'd never get through meetings. So that's why we do the highlight, the high level.
Yeah. No, I, I understand that.
Are you worried about services?
I'm not, I'm not worried, it's just the way that I do things is I, I'm always kind of comparing this with that.
Okay.
And so the way that we do this now is you, you chunk things together, right? You say, this has been changed, this has been changed, this has been changed. But for me, I, I think it would be, not that I'm asking this to, you know, especially done for me, but the way that I would do it is I would go back and say, okay, if this were the budget today, and this were approved, this is how this would change, this is how that would change. And so that would make me feel a little bit more secure with how those numbers are shaking out, that's all.
You're always welcome to come in and see the work that we, we do, and Michelle and Pat are both so detail oriented, and they keep track of absolutely everything, so you can always come in. And we need that, because when we go back, I think, we're already thinking of next year's, like this year's budget for us is kind of done, we're already looking to next year's budget, right? So we're always planning almost a year ahead, and so to be honest with you, we've already got the tickler file for next year, saying, okay, this didn't make it in this year, but you know what? Moving into next year, here's where we're heading, so, so we're always like that much ahead of, of the game.
Okay, so thank you for the questions, any answers? I have a motion, we have a motion on the floor and a second, assuming that there's no more conversation or questions. All those in favor of adopting the FY proposed budget as presented? It's unanimous, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to Michelle, too. So much work.
Moving on to the, um, 2019, 2020 school year calendar. So I'm going to let you do an overview, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
Sure, thank you, and I'm actually going to turn it over shortly to, um, to Anne Marie to just do a quick, a broad synopsis, Anne Marie, of where we're at, um, some of the types of communication that have come in. And then I, I'm hoping that tonight we'll be able to make a decision and vote on the calendar as it is, or if you feel so inclined to make some changes, then we need to know that. But, uh, you know, we're getting a lot of parents wanting to know where do we stand, so they can plan for next year. So Anne Marie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. When we left the conversation last, was, was two meetings ago, and then we left it that we were going to put the agenda, the calendar on the next agenda, so people would have an opportunity to talk to their constituents and see what questions and what concerns they were. And there were several that came forward, probably three or four of them, and I can mention them to you and respond to them, um, if that you wish. First was, not first, but one of them was about the sporting nets, you know, how would the change impact the sports, the practices, the games? So I talked to Tanya Rich, and she said it would be status quo, she said there would be no impact. At the middle school, she said they, uh, they scheduled them according to the school calendar, so that it would be okay, you know, there would be no worries with the middle school. So with the high school, it would all be the same, because even now on Fridays, kids either go home and come back, or they stay, and so they would do the same thing on Wednesday as they now do on Fridays. So Tanya was very comfortable, she said, don't even worry about me. Let's see, we had some people before about the asking questions about the speech services for the pre-K students in the, um, in the Lancaster schools.
Afternoon.
Right in the afternoon, because they have the speech services now on Wednesdays, and we were concerned that those children would miss their speech services. There were seven students who impacted, but two went to Lancaster because they were the ones with the afternoon, um, pre-K. So what, what Joan said that they would do next year is that the, the allied providers, the speech, the OTPD, would make their schedule, so that those students would have their services on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they go Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So they would put, schedule those services on the Tuesday and Thursdays, they would miss those services. And then we heard about, um, some number of, I don't know how many teachers saying, well, you know, if we do this, we have essentially two Mondays, you know, we have a Monday on Monday, and then we have a Monday again on Thursday, if we have a Wednesday afternoon. And I guess I would, I don't know how, I don't know how much, how widespread that is, but I guess I liken that a little bit to the question that you asked initially about the students who, um, you know, they, they like the, some students benefit by having the consistency of Monday through half-Friday. And then there's also students who benefit by having a midweek break, you know, through. I imagine that there are some teachers who, um, consider this two Mondays. I imagine that there are some, like I remember when I taught, there were many the week when I would have given my IT for midweek reset. And I suspect, although I have no way to know for sure, that probably the majority of, probably the students, and the fact that they take it in stride, you know, that, that most people would, um, you know, not have a feeling more maybe other. So those were the three things, a few major questions that came up. There's some questions about, you know, how would the, um, the afternoon extended learning, how would that work, you know, those are all things that are still to be determined.
And if I can speak to that, too, I mean, from our lens, the extended day, um, and I remember one of the, the genesis of this discussion, and we just felt like extended day would just extend itself, but yet some more to Wednesday afternoon, no differently than it already does now. So that wasn't a concern for us, um, so they would just add more programming, similar to the type of programming that they already add, so we, we're not concerned about that.
Elaine, do you want to?
Yeah, so regards to that, I got questions about, yes, but is there capacity, like is there enough, do we have enough space to hold extra students? If it's, if the program is there, but people can't take advantage of it, whether it be prohibitively expensive, or because there's no space for all the kids, then it's not really...
See, I, I don't think that that was a concern for us, because I'm thinking, when you take a look at the building, the fact that we have control over all of these buildings, and so space would not be an issue, that wouldn't be a concern for us. We would just make whatever arrangements we needed to make.
I had a conversation with Ray, and she said exactly the same thing.
Okay.
Other questions? Kathy?
Um, I know that there was, uh, the issue of the day for the professional development, um, was an issue for some. And I'm just wondering, and, and just reading through some of the emails, um, talking about effectiveness, and there's data for this, and there's data for that, which I don't know. But if we're moving forward with this three, Wednesdays and three Fridays, um, is there a plan? First of all, how, what criteria would you use to gauge the effectiveness? And how would one go about doing that? Because people, there are preferences that, that people have expressed, you know, the thing about the Mondays was new to me, but I, I can see that. I can also see your point that God helped me through this week, oh boy, Wednesday. But, so just if you could speak to the criteria for evaluating the effectiveness of the PD day, time, whatever, and how you would evaluate.
And I think Sean might have spoken about a little bit of one out, in our first meeting, when he said, we always do evaluation about professional development, you know, in fact, that's how, um, that's how Cynthia keeps track of PDPs for people, is when they turn their evaluation. And she knows that that's when PDP came, their relicensing. Also, to the presenters, you know, give feedback, it's beyond that, it's kind of hard to say, because at this point, what will be the professional development, um, on those, um, for next year? I'm not sure that the principals have determined what that is, so it would be hard to say this is how we're going to measure it. But I do have confidence in my educational colleagues that that's their thing, you know, they know how to do that, and I've taught in the program this and that.
We've talked about it in teaching and learning, and we've, and, and like with every PD, whether it's early release, or whether it's a full day, we always have an exit ticket, and we always ask for feedback. We've particularly spoken about when there is a major change, you know, we're certainly going to tap into, this is a change this year, you know, we certainly want to garner your feedback on what that change looks like. You know, there are other way, we also, you know, we also require everyone to, to sign in and take attendance for, you know, attendance for professional development, those kinds of things obviously inform all of...
From what I was reading from people, was the implication that the day would, the day, Wednesday or Friday, in and of itself, would make a difference. You understand what I'm saying? So that my experience on a Wednesday would be different, even though, you know, no matter what the professional development opportunity was, my virtual would be a Wednesday, this is going to be different than Friday. And I, I don't know that you can measure that?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that's what we're saying as well, I think for us, it's still about the, the richness of the actual development.
But then how do you then go back and decide that Wednesday worked, or we're going to go back and do Fridays again? I guess that's, that seemed to be the issue that folks had, that, that emailed us. So I don't know how you determine that.
I mean, could, why not just ask the teachers? You know, like, I mean, I mean...
But I think with stakeholders, right?
No, but I mean, if it's helping them learn better, if that's the premise that we're coming from.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that we get that metric, yes.
Right, and we're saying, you know, we heard Sean and, and everybody else come in and say, you know, this is what we've heard, and this is what we think is true, that teachers will be able to, you know, be more engaged, they'll be learning better, when it's not a Friday afternoon. I mean, I know for myself, I want to cut somebody if they schedule a four o'clock meeting on Friday for me, because I'm like, my brain is done, and I can't, you know. But, and I, I think we need other metrics, too, but I think asking the teachers, you know, did this work?
They're the ones that asked for it.
Right, did you feel more engaged, did it help you feel like you were able to get more from this when you're, it's not, you know, 4:30 on a Friday, and you're wanting to just go to sleep?
And I think that's exactly what Todd's saying.
Susan, you had a question?
I knew you were talking about the feedback after the fact, but I think, and you just mentioned it briefly, a reminder about what Sean said, about what the people who are being paid to come and present, for the most part, are pretty surprised when, when that's asked to happen on a Friday. He, he mentioned it, like repeatedly, companies were sort of...
We used to have it on Wednesday. We had it on, we had PD days on Wednesdays, I remember that. I didn't complain when it moved to Fridays, but, but my kids were in after-school care anyway, so, you know, but, Mike.
So along that same theme, um, to be clear, I think the majority, if not the vast majority of districts, do not do the professional development on Fridays. I think this district is unique, I mean, we do Thursdays, other districts do Wednesdays, I think that that's, I think a lot of the emails that I got, not all of them, but a lot of them centered around that difficult transition from the Friday to Wednesday. People figure it out, people do figure it out, but having said that, um, there are multiple stakeholders here, it's teachers, it's students, and it's parents. And the concern that I have, um, is that the majority of communication that I had with, um, residents revolved around dual-income parents, um, who had to secure childcare, um, which was more difficult on a Wednesday than on a Friday. And so that, that kind of, so that was a consistent message that I got, that I can do this on a Friday, it's way more difficult on a Wednesday. And then also, uh, you know, the other cohort are parents of young children who need that childcare. So if I've got kids in high school, and there's a PD day in the middle of the week, that would be easier for them to stay home alone, whereas if I have a four-year-old and a five-year-old, that would be much more difficult. I'd have to, I'd have to figure out childcare in some way, so I, I, while I, I don't, I don't see the transition from, away from Friday as inherently difficult, I think, I think I'd prefer to see it stay at least for this year, and then maybe revisit. So that, I mean, we're, we're in mid to late March, and I think I got a lot of feedback saying people would have a hard time really trying to make that transition this late, so, um, those are my, those are my two concerns.
Just a rhetorical question, and I'm not looking for an answer.
Yeah.
But we put this out in January, right, so this, I believe, I think that was the first time that we talked about this, and so, so this discussion is not new, and I don't know what, and I'm not saying one way or the other, Mike, but I am saying, what would the difference be between this year and, and it's a rhetorical question, I'm not even looking for an answer for it, I mean, to be honest. But I don't know what would change so much that it would be different to try the year after this year rather than this year, so it's just, it's just a comment, that's all.
And I guess, I can't, I certainly can't speak for the parents who express that concern, but I, I almost tend to agree with, if we're going to do this, let all of the days be on one day, rather than...
Oh, absolutely, I can agree with you.
So I think that, that would be part of the difference, and that was some of the concern, too.
Pick a day and go with it. I think you tried to, I think what you tried to do was accommodate and listen to, but I think it's easier for parents to...
Just make that hard transition and just, yeah.
accommodate, plus we'd also think it would be a test year, you know?
But then you're not, you're not really, yeah. The only, the only other thing I would add is, and I, and I, and you know, I wasn't going to say anything until we got to the table, obviously, but, um, I was thinking the same thing, like, give people a chance to get used to it. So two, two comments, but then what you're saying makes perfect sense. And the two comments are, you know, if we give, the, when you're, when you're working full-time, and you can work from home on Fridays, and it's a great opportunity for you, it's just a nice way to ease into the weekend, it's low-stress, blah, blah, blah. And changing a work schedule, um, and it depends on the industry, I get it, it doesn't take a year to change a work schedule. It's like, you need to have those conversations with your manager, and, and then they either say no or yes. I think it's, this is a lot about desire, and I think that I'm okay with keeping it on Fridays, but because this was, this came from the people who are doing the job. And, and for me, that one is like, oh, God, you know, that says a lot to me. The other thing I was going to mention, and I can't remember what it was, but it was valid, and if somebody brings something up, I'll remember it.
So to your point...
I know what it was, sorry. We heard from people who are not happy.
Right.
We typically will hear from people who are not happy.
Right.
That doesn't mean we want to, we don't want to hear from them, of course we want to hear from them, because we need to understand what the concerns are, in order for us to bring it back, and then discuss it, and kind of come up with, is there a solution? We haven't surveyed people to say, because we don't know if 80%, 90% of the parents are like, I'm good with that, whatever, just tell me what it is and move on. So I think of that, too, and I'm not trying to lean one way or the other here, I'm just kind of putting out devil's advocacy. Kathy?
Um, so I want to go back to something you said, we charged a committee coming to us with a recommendation, and I think that the, that this, a tryout, yeah, let's, what does Wednesday feel like as opposed to Friday? I have a hard time when a committee is charged with something, and they come forward with a recommendation, and unless there is an extremely compelling reason, just changing the work that they do.
Because they did, because they have...
Because they did, and I, I think that, and I, I might, at one point, were all the days going to be Wednesday? Or did, would they, did they want to do this as a compromise to try it out? I, I, was that, now that that means, sorry.
I don't remember that there was conversation on the model Wednesday. I think we came in thinking...
We'll try it.
We'll try it.
Yeah.
I just, as a working parent, that is tough.
But as, we, we gave this committee a job to do, they did it. And I, I think that, um, it was thoughtfully done, there's, there's an interest in doing something differently, so instead of making it a blanket change, it's an, an ease-in change. And, um, it's, it's, it's March, it takes, it starts in, um, the first, earlier these days, in September. There's time to plan and arrange, and, um, I would want to support the recommendation of, um, the scheduling committee.
For the Wednesday, Friday split?
For this, um, calendar that we're looking at right now.
For this, so for FY, for school year 1920?
I would support the recommendation of the committee, which is what...
Which is the split?
Which is the split.
As presented.
As presented, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you're trying this as an experiment, and you want to see whether the day makes a difference, then you kind of need some Fridays and some Wednesdays. You need like a control, and you need the variable, so, I mean...
Yeah, but you're thinking about it from an A/B test kind of perspective, right?
Yeah, I know, I know, obviously not that the professional development content isn't the same on those exact same days, um, but it, it seems to me like a decent compromise. And then when you add the extended learning in, I think that, I think that's a good faith compromise for the parents that are saying, I, I got to figure out childcare, like, for these four, I think there's four Wednesdays listed on here that were going to be available, like...
I think it's three, three, isn't it?
One, I think it's four, I think there was seven.
Yeah, there's a couple of like conference parent conferences, um, Wednesdays that are not included, you know, but we've always had conferences on Wednesdays.
Elaine, Elise, what do you think?
Um, I mean, I'm, you know, sort of with Kathy, and, you know, that when a committee comes to us, especially, you know, when it's made up of parents and teachers and administrators, and they've spent time working on this, and talking to other parents and other teachers, to trust when they say this, you know, we think this makes the most sense. But also, you know, I spent the last several weeks, whatever, since we got the first iteration of this, asking parents and talking to people, and, you know, I, I do understand the challenges of trying to, to work out, you know, your work schedule. But I also want to, um, you know, respect what educators are telling us and saying, we think this would improve our learning, um, and so, I think I'm okay with that.
But again, I think I want to ask Anne Marie, was the Wednesday, Friday, was it a concession to get to a Wednesday?
Yeah, that's what my only question...
Because that's, that's, like, it just seems weird that it would be, why did that happen?
If memory serves me right, I think, to be honest with you, Anne Marie, if memory serves me right, but I could be wrong, I hope I'm not wrong, I think initially it was all, should we look at all Wednesdays? And I think that you and I had some discussion, and it came back and said, should we make, should we make a compromise, or is there some other way to do it, to test it, or something like that? So I thi, I do think at one point in time there was some discussion, but I don't know if it was at the mid-level or...
Because it doesn't, because it doesn't hold water, if the reasons that we're saying we want to even try a Wednesday is for the reasons that you said, then why would you do it on two days? And it's like, just pick a day and do it. I can't get behind split. I can absolutely get there if the teachers feel very strongly that the Fridays are not working, because they're spending the time, we want them to learn, we want them, you know, I get it. But I can't do the split, because it's hard for parents to go, okay, well, sometimes I need a Wednesday, sometimes I need a Friday, pick a day.
Yeah, I'd rather see it all, all Wednesdays personally, if we're going to make the change, then just do it.
Uh, Susan and Steve, and then Mike.
I, I teach in a district where we do not have a set day, so this is just...
You don't?
No, and, yeah.
And it's fine?
I don't, I don't love, I have a Friday PD day this week, I don't, I don't love the Friday. Yeah, I, I, this is, this, I mean, I understand all the arguments that are being made one, one way or the other, but the parents in the town in which I teach don't seem to have trouble with it. It's published so far, ours has been published for a month.
So they know, it's not like this week we're having a PD day?
Oh, gosh, no, no, it's still in the calendar, but there's no, there's no set day, you know, it's not like they say, Friday's our PD day. They, um, you know, they just plan based on, based on what the month looks like, how many holidays there are, um, you know, like, like if you were to move the January one to Wednesday, it would be just a short week after, after New Year's. Or if you put it on the 15th, it's the week before, what is that?
That's high school.
No, but those are the, okay, so those aren't the...
No.
No, but are those finals or something?
They have their midterms.
The midterms, yeah, so I guess having a half-day... The midterms, yeah, so I guess having a half-day week, that doesn't, I guess, might have much of a difference. But, yeah, you know, I, I don't know. Things like that.
What do you think?
I think, I think there's an advantage to having it as a consistent day of the week. But I can understand the compromise, or the trial, to move it from some Fridays to a Wednesday as a transition, as a transition year. I think we revisit it next year. I will put either off to Friday or off to Wednesday.
For the twenty, twenty-one calendar?
For, yeah, for the year round next year.
What you got?
As a parent, I hate the calendar. There are fifteen full weeks of school, and I just, I've never liked the calendar. But I love what you did with November. November was really bad this year, so I love November. Um, I would love it if kids could get out earlier. I mean, the late June is just too late for me. And this is just personally. So, but I know you gotta do what you have to do with a calendar. Um, I've been looking at it for twenty years, and I, I hate PD days. You know, I can hop up when I don't know when I'm gonna hop up. I, when I went to school, it was all after school. My kids were after school, so this, this, to me, when I look at it as a parent, yeah, I hate it. But you do what you gotta do with what you have. I mean, you guys are getting hands tied, for most of it.
Right.
Yeah. Be about whether or not.
No, I, and you were teaching.
I love her!
Seriously, I was, I was, people didn't have to. No, but when I went to school, my parents, you know, they went to, they went after school, you know, they met the teachers after school, everything was after school, but they were all full weeks, except holidays. But, I mean, so, yeah, it just, and I, and I get it as a teacher, I totally get it, and I know that you're hands tied, you know?
I don't hate the calendar. I love that we have Thanksgiving, that they have Thanksgiving off.
I love the December Monday.
You know? You can, you can, you know. All right, Elaine.
Just, uh, one other thing that we haven't talked about that did come up for me that I think will be important to track, no matter what we do, is student attendance. And if there's changes on student attendance on these different days.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
I do know a lot of people, myself included, that.
Pull their kids out.
Leave on Fridays, and will kids pull, will parents pull their kids out on a full-day Friday? Will they take a Wednesday? Like, I, I don't know what would happen there, but it would be good to track.
But you know what, but that too, like, is like, even teachers do it too, right? Didn't, didn't, the, 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 attend, how is attendance?
Be careful what you ask of me.
How's attendance on PD days?
Awesome. Hundred percent.
Do you have drop-off?
What's that?
Do you have drop-off on a Friday?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm not administered, so I won't keep track of that stuff.
Oh, my God, did you like that pivot? So, okay, so y'all, well, we can keep kicking this out, I mean, there's no, but I think we, we kinda exhausted the subject. So, we have options. We can either vote the calendar as recommended by the committee. We could decide to keep them on one day, Wednesday or Friday. We need to give our teachers PD. This was a request from the teachers, that's how it came up. It wasn't a request from the administration, right?
That wasn't our request.
The other, um, um, factor is that the administration is making after-school care available, extend a day for anybody who may need it, which I think is a, I loved that when you mentioned that. I think that's really thoughtful to parents.
It's not free.
No, it's not free, but it's, this, no, it's not.
It's, it's.
And how many hours is it? Two, three?
Mm-hmm.
In the afternoon, which is just for the afternoon.
Is it less than a babysitter?
I would say that I think our extended care is very reasonable, very, very reasonable.
Okay, so what do you people want to do?
All right, I would move to adopt the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty calendar as proposed.
I would second.
Did you just move, to be fair, you said I would move?
No.
She said I would.
I seconded it. I seconded it.
Well, she said I would move and you said I would second, as if like.
Cause she said I would move, so I was.
Moved and seconded.
You want to do it again?
No. We have a motion on the floor, thank you. I am really struggling here because I respect what you've done with this, but the split days thing, I can't.
I just, call and vote and see where we land.
No, I, this is the time for discussion, you'll learn that.
I'll just say, for the vote, I think, I think I can speak for everyone here to say that we really appreciate the, the time and the effort that went into this. Regardless of how people vote, I'm, I, you know, I, I think we all very much respect, um, the attention to, and the consideration of all these variables, which is, which is obviously very difficult. So, thank you.
So, is that it?
I'm, I'm really, I could go either way, I think. I, I understand wanting to move it all to Wednesday, and there's a part of me that thinks, and I heard from several parents too.
Or Friday, whatever day.
You know, said, if you have to change it, and I, and, and, you know, everything, I, I definitely heard from some parents that said, oh, this would kinda be crap for me, but if it's better for the teachers, then I'll, I'll deal with it. You know, so I did hear that from some parents too, um, that, you know, like, I, they are, we understand and we, we value our teachers. Um, but I did hear from several parents, it's like, if you have to change it, fine, but just do one thing. Don't, you know, don't do half and half, just make it all, all Wednesday if that's what you're gonna do. Um, but I also understand the argument of, you know, several parents I talked to were like, Fridays are great for me because I don't work on Friday, or I can work at home, and, and I feel like it, it balances the respecting the teachers and giving them something that is, is potentially better for them, but also understands that parents and families are an important part of the district and trying to also respect.
I can buy that.
What they, you know, and, and it feels a little bit like, oh, we're kind of making nobody happy, you know, if we split, but at the same time, you know, it's, it's being respectful of the parents who said, you know, Fridays are really better for us and this is why, you know, but also, so I, I could go either way, I don't.
So the bottom line is it's three days that are moving to Wednesday.
Yeah.
I can buy that, okay. But, thanks for putting it for us.
Four, plus this conference has gone back to Wednesday, which is.
It's the red light, one, two, three.
Four Wednesdays.
One, four. There are four Wednesdays.
September eighteenth, October thirtieth.
Oh, I wasn't looking at, well, that, the slide's not that, okay. I wasn't looking at the top of the slide.
Four dates that are on the bottom, right, under, right, so extended by.
It's four and three.
Yeah.
Given what you just said, all those in favor? All those opposed? I'm sorry. The motion passes though, six to two, the opposed were, um, I almost. Mike, Bresch, and myself. All right, moving on. Director of people. We really beat that one into the ground.
Lots of rich discussion though, really. I, I'm very respectful with the discussion. Thank you, Anne Marie, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Okay, Director of people, personnel services contract.
So this, uh, so we're gonna bring Joan DeAngelis to the table. Thank you, Joan, for joining us tonight. Um, so this is, this is one of the, um, contracts that, that, well, the decisions that really comes forward to you. It's really an advise and consent decision, and you're really making the motion on my recommendation. And my recommendation, Joan and I have spoken, I would love the opportunity to work another period of time with her. I thoroughly enjoyed everything, Joan, that you've brought to the table, and I feel really good about where we're at. I mean, I know that we still have work to do, we all recognize that with everything, whether it's teaching and learning, food service, whatever, we always look to consistently improve. But I find you to be so honest and open. I appreciate your humor, I appreciate your guidance, your expertise, and so with all things considered this evening, I am strongly recommending that we move Joan DeAngelis forward for an extended contract.
For a three-year?
Three-year.
Okay. Any questions? This is advise and consent.
So no vote?
No, you vote. We have to vote. This is, um.
This is the manager?
Yep, the business manager, um, Spad, and I, well, you, we hire, but we don't hire these folks. We just advise and consent. So if there are no questions, um, I think someone needs to move.
How about I do it? I move to accept the.
Which, she's.
She put all the papers.
It helps that it's been, okay. I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation of awarding Joan DeAngelis a three-year extension of her contract as the director of people personnel services.
Can I get a second? Thanks, I knew, I knew you were there, and it's appropriate that you were. Any questions, comments? Thank you for everything that you've done over the past three years. You've done an awful lot for us.
To be here.
The only comment I'd like to make is that every time Joan has come before us to make a presentation, it's absolutely fantastic.
Oh, nice.
And we'll be here in two weeks with the transitions program.
Oh, good!
To present, so we have three pieces of presentation, so they are really excited and are coming with a slide show so you'll get to meet our adult learners.
Awesome.
Great.
All right, so all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, we're moving into subcommittee reports. Budget and warrant, Mr. Ruben.
What is, what is there to say after these?
I know, we're not. That's, right, all right. That was well done.
This was easy.
That was well done.
And personnel, Ms. Cody.
Okay, we met on, uh, March sixth. We reviewed the process with Brooke for her, for preparing for the superintendent's evaluation. She is going to, um, be working on her self-evaluation. And then at the, is it the March twenty-sixth meeting or twenty-seventh? The second, twenty-seventh meeting, um, from five to six. We're gonna do a workshop on, um, completing the superintendent's evaluation. So, um, it'll be, uh, you'll have the forms that we're going to use. Um, I, I don't know if Brooke will have her information ready for us by that time. I think that would be good if you did. And we'll just go from there. And then what we need from you is, uh, the deadlines for getting all the information to you, what you, what you see the deadline is.
Oh, well, let's look at it, shall we?
Why not?
I think, uh, so the tenth and the twenty-fourth are the April meetings, is that right, Alina? Check me on that, I think.
April tenth and twenty-fourth.
Okay, so, and then the eighth would be the last meeting before the election, so. If there's a way for, and you're doing it on the twenty-seventh, if there is a way to get, do you think two weeks is enough following the workshop?
For me, as the gang.
I think so.
Okay, so what's the deadline?
So that would be the tenth.
Okay.
If you could get all of your input to me.
Okay.
And then I, that will give me a couple of weeks to pull it all together. And then we should have that on the twenty-fourth. And that gives us a little tiny bit of wiggle room. Does that work, guys?
Indeed.
It could be. Great, awesome. Nice update.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, no, and that's, oh, just, just quick, 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 quick. Okay, so the other thing we've been working on is the school committee manual, and we have, at, we'll be adding an FAQ, and we, um, are looking through some other documents from MASC to sort of, um, add clarity to some of the other sections. So we're hoping to have a draft to really look at our meeting in April, which is, um, PSC in April is the third. So we can, um, probably do it, um, the tenth of the twenty-fourth and forward draft. You let us know.
The tenth or the twenty, so here's one other thing to think about. We, the tenth or the twenty-fourth? Why don't we put it on the tenth? Because we also, Alina, have to review the executive session minutes, and I haven't gotten anything back from Mike yet. Um, so if we, if we do the twenty-fourth for the executive session minutes and the tenth for the handbook, because the hand, because the tenth looks kinda light, although we've got the student reading.
And we'll be able to send the draft out ahead of time to folks.
That, yeah, that would be great.
Yep, 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 okay.
Does that work? What do you think?
So add it to the tenth then?
I think so. Okay, awesome, thank you for that. Correspondence, anything? I think all of you have been great about sharing the correspondence, so I can, um, let others know, give them a heads up, that's really helpful. Um, and our consent agenda, uh, meeting minutes of February twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. Warrants of April fifteenth, twenty nineteen are considered approved.
The, there's just one change, so I don't like that. The, um, votes go into executive session, I was listed as a yes, but I was not. So I told.
Yes, so just a program amended.
Oh, okay, sounds good. Thank you. And then items for next agenda will be.
Lots. I think it's a heavy.
It's heavy. Superintendent's workshop before the meeting. MRE is doing a presentation, school councils are coming in, the SRO MOU review. Um, we have an MOU in place, it's just a review, January, February Treasury report, and nature's classroom trip approval, and the tran, ah, I wanna see the transition classroom.
Oh, it's awesome.
That sounds like a fun agenda. Okay, I think that's it. And with that, I'm just going to note, um, note that we are really early, so will, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move at seven twenty-six P.M.
Thank you, and a second from Steve, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.